Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the city council, Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for an invocation pledge.
Good evening. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven will accompany you this evening as humble as we know how to do the business of the city. We ask you to come down and be in the midst of this discussion and to make the right decision to best serve our people. We ask thee to bless and our blessing your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olberer, roll please.
Jeri Fox, Word 1.
Here.
Jason, Word 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Word 3. Callan Crew, Word 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Word 5.
Here.
Taffrey, Word 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. I would like to just mention at the outset, Councilman Roth is out of town this evening. He had a death of a family member earlier this week, and so he is out of town on duty for that. We wish him safe travels and condolences. I will begin the night, approval of our council meeting minutes from our June the 6th meeting. And council, you've had an opportunity to review these minutes for a few days and had a chance to look them over. Now it'd be the chance to make any edits, corrections, additions, or if there are none, a motion.
Make a motion to the set.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, you have got the first four items tonight. Why don't you get us started off with the budget?
Honorable mayor and council, this is the second reading of the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. The proposed budget is balanced. It includes several adjustments, I'm sorry, salary adjustments throughout all departments. It's a, there's an increase of one mill in the city property, city's property tax mileage rate, an increase in staff, and includes an increase in health insurance for both city and employees. There's an increase for the city water and sewer rates, a decrease in the out-of-town, out-of-city residential sewer rates, an increase in the monthly base water and sewer rates, an increase in the fire service monthly charges for all pipe sizes, an increase in surcharge for the high-strength waste, and an increase in the gas-based monthly charges. There was one small change from the first reading. There was a $2,000 reduction in the outside agency funding. This affects the general fund and makes that general fund total go from $26,655,300 to $26,653,300. That was the only change that was made from the first reading, and I recommend approval of the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 budget as amended and presented in the second reading.
Thank you, Warren. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Obviously, we've looked at this for a few months and had a chance to review. Any discussion? There's none. A motion is in order. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Tom.
Yes, honorable mayor and council, this is also the second reading for the amendment to the utility ordinance regarding gas rates. The gas department has proposed increase to the fixed monthly base rates for all customers. The proposed increases are as follows: residential customers increase from $10 a month to $15 a month. Commercial customers increase from $15 a month to $20 a month. There were no changes from the first reading. I would also ask that whoever makes a motion to approve this includes that it becomes effective July the 1st, 2019. I do recommend the approval of the proposed gas rate increases to begin July the 1st, 2019.
Okay. Any discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve beginning July the 1st.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Tom.
Honorable mayor and council, this is again the second reading for the amendment to the utility ordinance regarding water and sewer rates. The budget has several proposed increases for water and sewer rates. First, residents inside the city limits will have a 5% increase. The current base rate is $9.45 a month. That rate will go to $9.92 a month. The second increase, I'm sorry, this is actually a decrease, is a 4% decrease in the sewer rates for residential outside the city limits. The change, the current rate is $4.15 a month. The new proposed amount is $3.98 a month. Third change is the proposed 5% increase in the fire service monthly charges for all pipe sizes. And finally, the budget also has an increase in the surcharge for high-strength waste. This is a, this fee has not been changed since 1999 and is due to the cost to treat the water, wastewater, and is not due to any other information or all the projects we have going on. With these changes, increases and slight decreases in some areas, the water sewer rates, the city will continue to remain one of the lowest in the surrounding counties, and I recommend approval of this proposed water sewer rate increases to begin July the 1st, 2019.
Any questions for Tom on this item? If there are no questions, then a motion's in order.
I make a motion to approve effective July 1st, 2019.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Tom.
Well, I've got one more late in, late in the evening, but I'll take care of the fourth one right here. Honorable mayor and council, this is a, and throughout the budget, there are eight, basically contracts for performing services. What I bring before you now is a total of eight of those contracts. They will be performing services for the city and other, well, not only the city, but the citizens. And the city funds those funds, funds those vendors throughout the year. The dollar amounts recommended are the same as last year. I recommend approval of the contracts for fiscal year 2019-20 as submitted.
Any questions or comments? If not, a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. It's time for the Randy Menino Show now. Randy, if you'll get us started out with your first item, please, sir.
Thank you, mayor and council. The first one is a proposed ordinance to the alcohol ordinance. It's a minor amendment to change the composition of the board from a five-member board to a seven-member board. Additionally, it also changes the appointment from city council for the chairman of that board and gives it back to that board to appoint their own chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this? Again, this is a first reading ordinance, and we will take this up for final consideration on our meeting, which is July 2nd, which will be the first Tuesday, since we won't be meeting on the 4th. Get your steps in here, Randy. If you'll get us started off with SU 19-03.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This, as well, all the cases forwarded from the planning commission, they have all been properly advertised and posted. Adjacent owners notified, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest. This particular case is a special use for Four Points Church to be located at 920 North Tennessee Street. Our ordinance requires a special use for a religious institution in the MU zoning district. With that, the applicant has applied, went through the process, meets the criteria, and with that, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on it and make a recommendation with a stipulation due to some concerns from an adjoining property owner. But they did recommend approval subject to the applicant locating the front door of the church, whereas not to impede potential package license for Tilly properties across Tennessee Street.
Okay. Questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 19-03 and ask anybody wishing to step forward, speak either for or against, to do so at this time. And if you would, when you do step forward, if you'll please give us your name and your address for our clerk, please, sir.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Scott Mack, and I'm here on behalf of Four Points Church seeking approval of the special use. I currently live in Acworth, Georgia. So we were looking and have been through the planning commission, and we appreciate all their time and efforts they put in on this to try to get this approved for us, and your time as well. As you can see on the screen here, we've got drawing notes been presented to us for a 300-foot boundary, which has been somewhat of a question mark during this process to make sure that if something is built on the property across the street by Tilly Holdings, that everybody is happy with the distance from front door to front door measurements. And as such, we are willing to be compliant with that when that property is built, and we know exactly what the front door and front door measurements are.
So, as proposed, that, are you fine with the way that's drawn as proposed?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And again, public hearing for SU 19-03. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 19-03. And again, we'll take this up for final consideration on their meeting on July the 2nd. We'll now move on to File Case Z 19-01. Mr. Menino, once again.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This is a proposed rezoning for 212 acres. Properties currently zoned are 20 single-family residential. They're proposing are 10 single-family residential. With that, they previously had a 247-lot subdivision approved on this, and the roadway has been built. Since then, none of the homes were built. They're coming in with a different plan and trying to utilize the property and proposing a 330-lot development. With that, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and went through several items on this. They did recommend approval, and with that, they had several enumerated conditions. The three conditions that staff recommended, they did recommend those with a couple additional ones. First recommendation is a maximum of 330 lots. On the proposed 212-acre request, provide a minimum of 98 acres of open space as shown on their site plan to construct an amenity package as shown on the site plan that they submitted. Additionally, the Planning Commission did add additional conditions to that, one being that the amenity package, the construction start on the amenity package, by the time that 40% of the permits have been issued, so they won't be able to exceed a certain number of lots in the development until they start the amenity package. The next one they recommended was to have a minimum 2,000-square-foot home size. As I noted in the work session, the applicant was fine with all those conditions. However, they would like some additional consideration for single-story or ranch-type homes. A package was handed out to you with some additional material that shows a minimum 1,650-square-foot ranch-type product or several different styles of that. And they would like that to be added to the recommendation that came from Planning Commission. Again, Planning Commission did state a minimum 2,000-square-foot home size, and they would, they are requesting that you amend it. The applicant is here, and they'll probably do a little better explanation of that than I did. But with that, that is it.
Mayor, if would I, two questions for Randy. One is, if my memory is correct, the amenities package for the 40% was it had to be completed?
No, they have to start permit, start construction on it at time of 40%.
At time, okay.
Which is 132 homes.
Okay. And then the second one was the 1,650 square feet they're proposing? I'm assuming that's heated, heated?
That is, that is, but that'll, you can ask the applicant. Because the Planning Commission, you know, just stated the 2,000. So they've come in with a different package. You may have a copy of, of there, but...
And I've got a question for you, too. Is there, but I could ask the applicant, too, but I guess I'll ask you. Is there a recommended percentage of homes that would be ranches or that would be acceptable to have the 1,650 square footage versus the minimum 2,000?
Yeah, it'd probably be, probably be best to talk to Mr. Easterwood about that, one of the representatives of this application.
I know they might be planning, but it's...
It's gonna depend on what product is selling and at the time, how the market is, is going. You know, different people like different products. Some of them are gonna be pre-sales, some will be...
But from a planning and development perspective, there's, there's no thought to percentage, or it doesn't really...
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Randy? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for File Case, what are we, 19-01, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak at this time. And again, if you'll say your name and your address, please, sir.
I'm Joe Harris, and I live at 22 Pembroke Lane. Of course, that's in Cartersville, and I'm here on behalf of Avanti Properties. Mayor and council, it's great to be here tonight, and I appreciate y'all's consideration of this request. I've also gotten back Chris Easterwood, and he'll come up and address your question in a minute, mayor, after I've got through with it. The question, I think, when you get down to that, is why you should approve this request? Well, Councilman Roth suggested that I look at the joint comprehensive plan that I know a lot of y'all in the room spent a lot of time on between Bartow County and Cedar Hills and Cartersville. And I went on page 47, and they, y'all surveyed the community, and you said, "Which housing options are needed in your community?" The number-one answer was 61% saying yes, with senior housing. And number-two was single-family housing, 41%. So that's what we're trying to do, is address, you know, what the folks wanted with a quality proposal. When you talk about doing the ranch homes and everything, folks over 55 want less yards and less bedrooms. When you're, this is what our customers want, you know, a little bit less yard to cut. Younger families, they want two-stories room, plenty of room for kids to run around. Their construction is nice, but when you get into that ranch town, oh, those people gotta look at more money, you know, to spend, and so that ranch is worth a lot more. Another reason I think you ought to go from that, you're gonna hear from the Carter Grove residents that said, "They're all about this. Amenities nice, that park's gonna be real cool." You're gonna hear from a neighbor that when you get in here and you're looking, there's a lot of riffraff going on where their stuff not constructed. So it's nicer to have, you know, development there with 300,000 houses. What they're talking about is that there's a concern about this. This is the current product that they're offering. And you know, you're talking about $22,000 and $300,000, and this is two levels. And, you know, we left that in the past. When you go in here, these are the ranch-style houses that are being built in Cherokee County. Y'all saw, I got Chris to go over the stapes, and make me copy, this is amazing what stapes to do. But these are, you know, we're wanting 1,650, and this is a 1,650-square-foot residence, and it's pretty nice. And it starts at $277,990 a portion. Now, they sell you on that before you know it, by the time you get out of there. And this is a larger one. It's the same thing, it's a 294. So that's the kind of thing that we're wanting to do. And I know there's concerns, but is that developer gonna maybe do something to drop home values? That would not be in his best interest. When you develop these properties, you put a lot of money up front for streets and roads and utilities. Your profit's on the backside, so I can guarantee you, Chris and them are gonna keep it, keep it up there. And when you talk about this, everybody wants more green space. Now, what we've asked y'all to do is we need to put the houses on the ridge lines. You know, they're a little close together, but we don't have to break as much when you want slabs. Now, the other part of it is, if you want a basement structure and all, we got lots for that. But when you put them across the top, it does come closer together. But look at all that green space. You can see these little lines of creeks in there and all that. We don't have to get under the natural area, and everybody wants this park. I don't think there's a bigger, bigger park in development in Bartow County, maybe there is. But think about this right now. We got R 20. We want the other to be R 10. If we had to stay at that R 20, we don't have to build those more. If we're gonna sell our houses, then we'll give us one, R 20. You know, let us drop down. We're all the wind, we probably have to be more ready. But, you know, I like the streams, and I can see the water, scat trails, and all that kind of good stuff in there. So that's why we want to keep this property at a very high value. So what we're asking to do, again, is to go from R 20 to R 10, and that's how we're gonna, gonna get it constructed. What is the process has made this better. Chris and them have let us do a good job. Randy and David in the development department, they have made real good constructive changes. We've listened to them. We talked to all the department heads. There were some good questions, you know, y'all had that meeting. We talked about a lot of other different things and got their sign off. We went to see the city school superintendent. Mark Farback was real good about it. We went and saw Peter Olson, cause some of these backs up the county. I think he was really scared it was gonna have some kind of ask. He said, "Do you want to ask him for this?" "No, we're just letting you know." So next time, I'll ask Peter for something. I'll go over there, he'll get that. We've talked to Jean Camp. We went to talk to Tom Seals, the Bartow transportation planner. You'll have two residents that'll, that'll come up and talk in just a second. But again, I'm gonna be available now and after the meeting if y'all got questions. We're gonna call Chris up here to answer the mayor's questions and anything else that you do. And then when we get through, we've got two more folks. We got, we got a neighbor to call up, Pamela Morris, and we've also got Lori Patch here that lives there to speak, and I think that'll be all on our behalf. So Chris, could you come up and answer the mayor's question, please?
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good, good. My name's Chris Easterwood. I live in Dallas, Georgia. I've been with this property and with the original developer since the beginning, so, since about 2005. So it was, new owners bought it in 2011, and they took me with it. And so I take care of the property and, and deal with the HOA, deal with the builders, and trying to complete the vision.
Thank you. So again, the question I asked Randy was what percentage, or is it, is it gonna be totally market-driven?
It is market-driven, and to be honest with you, sir, the question, the ranch question just, it kind of originated when the question, the demand came out. They wanted me to commit to 2,000-square-foot homes. And, and my response was, you know, that makes sense for a two-story, but kind of on the spot, and I did have a little bit of homework already that I had done, was that I knew that there was product out there, ranch product, that was attractive to a 55-and-up target group that we'd like to see. We're not talking to anybody specifically about this, but we know these product lines. We know that they're great, you know, they're building. I put the package together for you guys, but, you know, you can see there, the 1,650s kind of, that's the, that's the lowest, but then there's 17-something, and then I think there's an 1875, and there's 2,000 after that. We're not about trying to hold it down. I just didn't want to commit and just take that away. Because, you know, if you're already looking, if you're looking at a 1,700-square-foot offering to a 55-and-up target and the price is at 330, there's, you know, we don't artificially commit to making that a $360,000 house and price us and these people out of the market.
Sure.
So that, we were just trying to be, you know, to keep some flexibility. As far as typical ranch construction, you might see 25%, tops. Most people get a two-story. They really do. Less roof. You get a bigger master with a two-story. You know, you get a little bit more yard with a two-story. But there are lots of folks that have the need and the want for a ranch home. So we wanted to have that flexibility. That made sense.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. One thing we prefer to be 1,650.
Hi, I'm Lori Patch. I live in Cartersville, here in Carter Grove. I just, I made myself a few notes so I didn't run on like I did last time. I just wanted to say a few things in favor of the rezoning. I actually just rode through that section with my girlfriend tonight, looking at the lots. And it is, it looks like so much right there, but it's a ghost town right now. And there's a lot of just people wandering through. There's trash on the sides of the road. There's just not a lot going on there. When I purchased my home three years ago, we definitely saw where the community was going, and I feel like this sends us in that direction. It's more desirable lots than what they are right now, which is gonna encourage builders and it's gonna encourage people to buy homes. I personally started off wanting a basement. I love my slab lot. You can see your kids out in the yard playing, and I just think this seems more practical. One thing, I don't know if you can tell from that, but our pool is in that little white square at the top. So we have no houses around our pool. So we constantly have theft and vandalism, people jumping in the pool in the middle of the night. So to me, this seems like it would be a great way to further the growth in our neighborhood, expand our amenities, but also have a larger footprint in the neighborhood and, which in turn will help my home value and things as well. So I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Pamela Morris, or you can call me Pam. That's fine. I'm here because I have a common property line with the Phase 2 of the subdivision. I have a larger, larger partial of land, but because of the natural lay of the land, this subdivision does not hinder me, or I wouldn't think anybody else in the area that has a larger lot of land. But anyway, when I received this letter, I did make contact with Mr. Harris because he is representing Avanti. And I had some concerns, but after talking with him, I feel comfortable with what Avanti plans to do. I met Chris, who is the manager, and at the, at the planning meeting, and also talked with him about some concerns that I had. And, you know, I'm, I'm really excited, to tell you the truth, about what's gonna happen in this neighborhood. I've been living in the neighborhood for 15 years. Although my property is not part of the subdivision, I use the road that the houses are gonna be built on almost daily. And there's a lot, there's some safety issues in the area. Four-wheelers, motorcycles, guns, theft, and even drag racing. In fact, I guess it was about three weeks now, I spoke about that at the planning meeting. I actually heard drag racing going on from my house, and I actually called 911 because even though it stopped at one point for about five minutes, it started up again. And, you know, when you're talking about all these safety issues, you're talking about kids, a lot of kids. I mean, there may be some young adults, too, but most of this, I'm sure kids are doing. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. The area is an eyesore. It's been, that road has been there from Phase 1 over to the golf course for about 10 years now. And I'm, I'm really glad that Avanti has purchased this property and is willing to finish this subdivision. It is, it's, it's a beautiful area. And in fact, if, if I was looking for this type of home, you know, it would be a desirable area for me to build. And I like the idea that they're, they're including senior citizens in this and, and young couples because the golf course, the amenities that they're, that they're offering with the golf course and the green space is very important to me, anyway. And I think anybody else that would live in that area, they've, they've increased the green space and then the school area. But, you know, these, I know the rezoning is really, what it's about is the going to a smaller lot. Well, you know, there's a lot of people that I think would want the type house that they want to build and the size house, especially, you know, retired couples that maybe want to play golf on that golf course. And so I think, I think, and I think they're really gonna do a good job. I've talked to them and seen some of the plans that they're gonna, they're gonna do. And, and I think they're just gonna make it a nice place to live and it's gonna make the neighborhood better and also our Cartersville community better. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you show a little quick where you live? There's golf courts to the left.
I have a nephew, my husband and I, and I guess it's, and then my daughter-in-law. I have a nephew, my husband and I, and I guess it's, and then my daughter-in-law. But we're on about 45 acres, but it's, you know, I'm glad to see this area coming to fruition at this point. It's been there a long time, a long time, so it shouldn't be so long.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this rezone, Z 19-01? Four against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for Z 19-01. And again, take this up for final consideration at our meeting on July 2nd. We'll move on to Z 19-03. Mr. Menino.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This is a proposed rezoning for property...
This is a proposed rezoning for property that is currently zoned, currently zoned GC and HI, and they're looking to turn it all to HI. It's on the portion adjacent to Highway 41. I believe they're looking to take approximately 4.18 acres of the general commercial and place that HI on it for an area where I think a portion of the south majority is currently operating. It's kinda related to the next case, but it is an actual different zoning. One's going from HI and GC to HI, the other one is going from MN to HI. With that, Planning Commission did hear it and did recommend approval with the conditions stipulated in your package.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Menino at this point? Thank you, Randy. I'll open up the public hearing for file case Z-19-03. Any motion to step forward, speak for, against, may do so at this time?
David Flint, 935 Ivy Falls Drive, Atlanta. I'm representing the Tilly family. This is 4.1 acres from commercial to HI, has no frontage on 41 or Joe Frank Harris Parkway. That remains commercial, and this is part of the salvage yard there. It's probably four acres of commercial on the front, so it's, I think it may already be used that way. I represented the Tillys back in 2003 when the, there were some issues with Mr. Dillinger about the mining going on there. And this is really cleaning up the property there through mining. So, we're rezoning this part, and the next case is in the back. And I don't think it's controversial, it's just consistent with what's there. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Flint? Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for, against, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for Z-19-03. Take this up for final consideration on July 2nd. We'll move on to 1904. Mr. Menino, one more time.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed rezoning from mining and heavy industrial all to heavy industrial on a 7.27 acre tract on the rear of the property we've been talking about. David's put together a good display, or Connor, I don't know which one did that, that shows the property to the right, it's the one we're talking about now. And as Mr. Flint had mentioned before, there was some swapping of property and property exchanges several years ago. The mining property has been operating more of a heavy industrial nature. They're looking to provide the proper zoning on that, with that Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Randy on this item? And if there are none, we'll open up the hearing for 19-04.
I don't have anything to add, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on this request?
I understand some people wanna go to Savannah, so I'm just trying to be brief as I can.
Somebody up here might appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to speak on file case Z-19-04, may do so at this time? And seeing none, we'll close that hearing. And again, take that up for consideration on July 2nd. Randy, the next item for you, and the last one for you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Mayor and Council. This is a standard annual software maintenance agreement that we utilize with our CityPermit, CityView software. We utilize it for licensing permits, inspections, code enforcement. And with that, we recommend your approval of this agenda item.
Okay. Council, you get to vote on something. Any discussion, if not, a motions and order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Reed, got the next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is for a piece of public art to be placed under the bridge at Gilmer Street, representing the four arts, which would be drama, dance, music, and then visual arts. So, this has been reviewed and endorsed by the Downtown Development Authority Board, the Cultural Arts Alliance Board, and the Booth Arts Academy. Kent Mullinax with the booth is going to help us choose five local artists from the Booth Artists Guild to paint and interpret the art in, with a Bartow County-Cartersville centric view. They're gonna give input on the final design, and the DDA board does recommend approval of this item.
Thank you. I think the big piece on that was the way that it was gonna be displayed, and that Public Works is fine with the way that's gonna be.
Correct. Rather than affixing it to the bridge, we have devised a system with Public Works whereby we will place the murals onto freestanding posts. They will not, in that way, interfere with anything having to do with the bridge and can be easily removed for maintenance, repair, replacement, anything like that. And you guys did ask about signage. There is also an existing stop sign in addition to the one that's on the actual bridge. So, we will work, of course, with Public Works on any particular signage there.
Thank you. Any questions for Lillian?
When do we expect this thing up?
They'd like to start work in July, if Council approves.
So, they paint it while it's up there, or they're gonna?
They will, they'll put the boards up, paint them, and the goal is to actually do it during summer so that they can get some of the local children involved with doing a portion of the piece, just painting in some of it, under the supervision of the other artists. So, the goal is to have it started and finished before the start of the school year.
Cool. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Reed? Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mayor Proten Cooley is gonna handle this next item while I sit back.
Yes. This is a contract between the City of Cartersville and the Rotary Club of Etowah for the July 4th celebration at Dillinger Park. JRN Management Services, Inc. has contracted with the Rotary Club of Etowah to coordinate this event, and that contract is in your package as well, and your approval of the contract is recommended.
Are there any discussion? Kinda get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have you back, man.
Thank you, fella kids. Glad to be back. Missed y'all. Let's see. Mr. Gillum, you're up next, and Ms. Bowlander, you're on deck.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Come to you with a contract with Legend Sports Media. They want to replace the existing scoreboards in the Carbsville Sports Complex on Fields 1, 3, and 4. They will provide the advertising on the scoreboards, and it is no cost to the city.
I should've asked this in the work session, and the numbering has gotten me, the softball field is number one, correct?
We got three and four, yes, sir.
Okay. And currently, the high school, the softball team, there's no advertising on that board anyway, right?
Not currently, no.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom had mentioned during the work session, I think those three scoreboards valued at about $25,000 if we had to put those things up ourselves? Good job. Ms. Bowlander, you're up. Mr. Porter, you getting warmed up out there in the bullpen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is for the renewal of our website company that we work with, that designs and manages our website. We have it with Civic Plus, and our price last year was $14,289.94. I did challenge our price this year and ask them to reevaluate it because we've been with them for several years. And, you know, due to increased technology and things, if they could, you know, lower that price any, and they've agreed to lower it, bring it back to $10,000. And that does come with 100% redesign of the site at this time. So, I recommend approval of that.
Okay. And you'll be heading up the project of the redesign?
Yes. And we will get all the departments involved that need to be, you know, that have planning development, parks, rec, that kinda stuff. Make sure everybody's getting what they need out of the site in the redesign process.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Rebecca on this? And if not, a motion?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you're up.
Yes, Mayor and Council. First item is CrowdStrike Services Agreement. The Fiber Department had to hire CrowdStrike to assist us in a security incident recently, and amount not to exceed $40,000, and it's recommended for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is the property and casualty insurance renewal. At this time of year, we have to renew our insurance for next fiscal year. A couple of years ago, when we switched Travelers and Liberty Mutual, they came back in, and Liberty Mutual oversees our property insurance, reviewed several of our parcels within the water department particularly, and that was a group insurance. They basically went through and individualized several parcels within that, several properties that added value to the property list, which increased the overall cost. They went up partially last year, and they're going up in the second amount this year for the next fiscal year. That increased some of the premiums for, over, for fiscal year 1920. Additionally, we added additional insurance that was recommended. So, the total premium I'm asking for this year approval was $664,253.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
And this includes a full revamp on our ransom coverage, correct?
Yes, additional coverage for that in case of future. The recommendation is going to go with $1 million in network and information security liability. This is the highest amount they offer. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, a motion is in order. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Continue on Dan Lee.
Next, our item is NCI Fiber Installation. We have a new customer that we'd like to connect to the fiber services, Schnitzer Steel, basically located in Industrial Park Drive. At the amount that they'll be paying us monthly, it'll be about a 16-month payback. They've agreed to pay $8,000 of the installation cost. NCI costs, we $14,316 recommend for approval. There'll be some additional ancillary charges that we'll have to have for that, but that's recommended, signed as to NCI at $14,316.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions? All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Dan?
Yes, sir. There's a CDWG software purchase. This is to go on 350 PCs and servers within the city. It's called Falcon Complete Software. This'll be something we'll have to do going forward annually. Cost for next fiscal year is $56,402.50, and it's recommended for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion? All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Ms. Brock, you have the next one?
Yes, in response to the RFP that was sent out for the old fire station, number three, and the adjoining Wolf Track property located off Highway 113, we received five RFP responses, one from Dempsey Auction Company, H&amp;H Realty, Lake Point Realty Group, Maxx Fan Real Estate and Professional Realty Group. City Attorney Keith Lovell, myself, and Tommy Strickland, who's the property owner at 1220 Highway 113, reviewed the RFPs and recommend Dempsey Auction Company with the condition that I be allowed to negotiate the final terms with Dempsey Auction Company, and we will present those to you all in a contract at a later date. So, I ask for your approvals in order to begin negotiations with Dempsey Auction Company.
Okay. Any discussion? And if there's not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you have the next two.
Good evening, everyone. Up first is our DNC restock. We do these from time to time. This particular one is for valves and branch pieces which are necessary to construct meter settings. We took our solicited bids from multiple suppliers. The low bid came from Hayes Pipe Supply at $5,702.26, and recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next up is our washwater tank at the water treatment plant. You'll remember several meetings ago, we approved the engineering on this. This is actually the construction piece. Bids were opened on May 24th from pre-qualified contractors, and Precon Corporation was the lowest and best bid at $799,000 even. That is a budgeted item funded by the revenue bond that was issued last year.
Should've asked this in the work session, but is the, where's that gonna get, is it gonna be built right next to where the existing one is? I think you.
It's actually going to be right on top of the existing one. We will actually take out the existing one because it sits on a hill for elevation, and it gets us out of doing a lot of grading by doing this.
I remember you'd mentioned that before, thank you. Any other discussion, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We've got two items to add, Council. All entertain a motion to add those two items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. The floor is yours, Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, the first item I'd like to add is a resolution on denying supplemental adding anti-light-on-notice claim on Lester Robert Baker. That was that garbage truck accident we had a while back, and we previously denied this claim as well. Recommend that resolution for your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion, and if not, a motion?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the other one you have, Keith?
Mayor, the second item is the county is doing a road project that involves relocation of gas utilities. We would like, at this time, for y'all to go ahead and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents associated therewith, including the prior rights agreements for that, so when they're ready, we can sign those, because that will probably happen before our next council meeting.
Okay. Any discussion? If there isn't, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, the finance report.
Admiral, Mayor and Council, we will be looking at the April 2019 and comparing to April 2018. In the general fund, revenues increased over last April by $1.4 million. Expenses increased by $762,000. The areas of revenue are tracked on a monthly basis. Local often sales tax have an increase there of about $288,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about $111,000. In the water and super fund, revenues increased over last year by $2.7 million. Expenses increased by $2.3 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last April by $2.7 million. Expenses increased by $7.8 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased cost of purchased gas, increased debt service, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.3 million. Expenses increased by $356,000 due to increased personnel cost, decreased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, and increased capital expenses. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased over last year by $27,000. Expenses increased by $320,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenue decreased over last April by $101,000. Expenses increased by $25,000 due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenue decreased by $70,000. Expenses decreased by $10,000. This is due to increase, I'm sorry, due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, cash position for the month of April, the total unrestricted cash balances increased slightly, and the total restricted cash balances decreased.
You got anything to add on the final report? Any questions for Tom on the finance report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that needs to come for council this evening? Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
To do what?
To adjourn.
Thank you.